All right. Well, good evening, everyone. We are four minutes past the hour, so we'll go ahead and get started. This is Gary Trendle, Chair of the Hopkinton Planning Board. I hereby call our May twenty second, two thousand twenty-three meeting to order. Pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of two thousand twenty-three, this meeting will be conducted via remote means in accordance with applicable law. This means that members of the public body as well as members of the public may access the meeting via virtual means. Participants may access this meeting through the remote media link as posted on the meeting's agenda, or through the town's online calendar. When required by law or allowed by the chair, persons wishing to provide public comment or otherwise participate in the meeting may do so by raising their hand or otherwise signaling their intent to speak. This meeting will be recorded. Please take care to mute your microphones unless you have been recognized by the chair. We will now confirm attendance of members. Please respond with presence if you are on this call. Rob Benson.
Present.
Jane Moran. We lost her again. Ron Preefer.
Present.
Elise Mihalowski.
Present.
Was I close?
Close, Mihailowski.
Mihailowski, okay. Matthew Rocker.
Present.
Michael King.
Present.
Vika Sathrani.
Present.
And Nadi Arora.
Present.
Now, we just need you to respond presently you're here.
Present, yes.
Right. All right. Well, first and foremost, I just want to welcome three new members to the planning board. So, and I think we're fortunate. We have a reasonably straightforward agenda, so we'll break this in. Hopefully, without too long of an evening ahead of us. Just really quickly to go through our agenda, we do have a number of administrative items to take care of, and we'll go ahead and start with those. We are going to reorganize as a board, which we do after every election. We have some administrative items to take care of with regards to Box Mill, Turkey Ridge, Maspa Knoc Woods. We'll save the minutes for the end. And then we also have one continued public hearing for twenty-eight Lumber Streets. And just as a reminder, the three new folks will not be able to vote on that since that is a continued hearing. So I think we can go ahead and get started with the board. See, I wish that Jane was able to be on for this. She just texted me here. Let me. Okay, she's having troubles. So she said, sorry to miss meeting. We'll watch on H cam later.
She can, Gary, she can call in. There's a call in number. So she can sign in with her Zoom and then call in on her phone if she wants for audio.
Or she could just be audio only.
Right.
All right. Let's let's go ahead and I know we'll go a little bit out of word here, but I just, just with regards to the reorg, I think it'd be preferable to have our full board here. So let's see if Jane can jump on or not, but maybe we start with the Box Mill Road Bond Release. And John, do you want to just quickly walk through why this is before us? And I think especially for the new folks, just a little bit of background on this requested bond release?
All right, so through the chair. For the new members, whenever we go through subdivision approval and a road is approved, and then that road is accepted by the town at town meeting, therefore becoming a public road and not a private road. The bond that they placed on the construction of the road for the town can get released. So the bond is placed to finish any construction that may not be done when they go to release the lots to sell them. So you'll see the process of establishing a bond tonight. We're doing that for Turkey Ridge. So Box Mill had done that. They built the road. Town inspected it. It went to town meeting and was accepted. So now it is effectively a public road. And so they would like that bond to be released so that they can stop paying the premium on it. So Box Mill has a bond, or sorry, this is actually a cash bond, not a tripartite bond. So Box Mill submitted a check for a hundred and two thousand five hundred and sixty dollars to complete the work. There's no more work to be done. The developer completed all the work. So now he has asked that that money be released back to him. Or needs to vote to release that money.
Sorry, I am getting texts from people asking about if the planning board media is going to be on H cam. So just tracking a few things down here. And one other, sorry, one other quick note, I went a little out of word here, but Michael did just inform me that he is, he was not able to get sworn in today. So, Michael, I think that just means that you're not on the planning board yet, so you won't be able to vote or participate as a member. But really quickly, I just want to confirm that Vika said then Nadi, have you both been sworn in? You confirm with a yes?
Yes, yes, yes.
Also is re sworn in.
Oh. Thank you, Matthew. I forgot all about that, and I should have acknowledged you for committing to another term here. So thank you. I shouldn't have mentioned that earlier. Okay, so back to the Box Mill Road Release, Road Bond Release. And John, I think you already hit on the total, the cash bond of a hundred and two thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. And the town has confirmed all work has been completed in order to accept the road at town meeting. So from the town, no further inspection is necessary. Are there any questions from the board before we go ahead and take a vote on releasing this bond? And John, just to clarify, just to confirm, the motion would be to actually release the bond. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so on that note, I will entertain a motion to release the bond for Box Mill Road.
So move.
Rob Benson, second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Rob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jane?
Jane is a yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Vika said?
Yes.
Nadi?
Yes.
And Gary is a yes as well. Let's keep going through these quickly. Yes, John.
Can I just ask Jane, can we hear you, Jane? Because I think you had an echo, which means that maybe your audio is working.
I do.
Jane, just a hypothesis, but I think maybe your microphone is working, but I'm wondering if maybe your speakers, the volume is just turned down on the computer?
I'll try that. Sorry for the technical difficulties. How's that?
That sounds good. We can hear you.
Okay, I can hear you as well.
Great. All right, the next one on our agenda is for Turkey Ridge Bond Establishment. So, John, do you want to give us the background on this one?
All right, so this is the beginning of the process that we just went through with Box Mill. Turkey Ridge is currently under development. The subdivision plan was approved. They have constructed a portion of the, they've constructed the road, but not to the final standards. And so what they did is they prepared a Form G, and that details all of the items that remain to be done for the roads to be completed. So what this, what purpose this serves is if the developer abandons the project and the town needs to finish construction, the town has the appropriate amount of money to use to finish that construction. So they've submitted a Form G with an estimate. Beta has reviewed that Form G and provided their own estimate, which usually is a little higher. So that's what happened here. You can see the Form G from the developer and then Beta's review with the new amount. And basically, it's up to the board to determine what the amount for the bond should be. And then the board will vote to establish that amount, and the developer will take out a bond in that amount and provide it to the town. There's a little wrinkle in this one in that the developer is also looking for a Form K endorsement, which means that some of the lots will be released for them to sell. So usually the town for our subdivision regs does not allow any of the lots within a subdivision to be sold until the road is either completed or a bond is placed on the road. And so what developers will do is they'll have the bond done and then Form K. And so each member will actually need to come in and sign the Form K because we need everybody's signature on that if it's approved.
All right, thanks, John. And I see both Shane and Bill are on. And Shane, just to sort of reinforce what John just said, I'm assuming that you're hopeful that we can establish what that bond amount is tonight. And then we can go ahead and vote on the lot release via Form K as well. Is that your objective?
Yeah, yep, exactly.
All right, so I think the biggest challenge we have here is that there's a pretty substantial gap between your estimated bond of three hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and five dollars and Beta's estimate of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And so Shane, maybe we'll start with you. You know, you've seen Beta's estimate. Johnny, are you able to pull up on the screen the Beta analysis? But Shane, maybe we'll just start with you with regards to your bond estimate and, you know, if you want to make any proposed changes to that, or if you want to try to convince us as to why your bond estimate is better than or more accurate than our peer-reviewed assessment.
Yeah. No, I don't. I know Beta probably uses an estimating platform. Ours is based off hard numbers. We have proposals and contracts for all this work. So we're pulling actual numbers off of, you know, the actual cost that we're going to be paying. Obviously, Beta uses an estimating platform. I don't know how they generate their numbers. It looks like they use DOT regulations and costs, which is, you know, twenty to thirty percent higher than what we pay. So that's really, the scope of works lineup, Gary, everything looks even in terms of what needs to be done. It's just, you know, their cost for trees are a hundred thousand and mines, you know, sixty-eight. So I just, I don't really know how you handle that.
Yeah, I think it's a fair question, Shane, and we'll we'll go to Phil in a second here, but I think the, you know, from a labor expense perspective, if the town is going to do this, we have to use prevailing wage, which is higher than what you might actually be paying. And I think that's the important note here is that the reality is that you can probably do a project for less money than the town, but if the town needs to come in and finish this up, it's going to cost us more money than it's going to, than you might be able to do the work for. So Phil, are you on, Phil?
Yep, I'm here.
Do you want to just kind of quickly summarize where you saw differences in the basis for your estimate?
Yeah. So I didn't even review their estimate. This is a standard way we do their estimate for public bid. We do work for municipalities all over the state, and we typically use, yeah, we use mass dot prices for exactly what you just said earlier. It has to be a publicly bid project. There's a process and also a cost to doing a public bid, so.
All right, thanks, Phil. And Shane, I think just from past experience, you know, if there were places to potentially lever this down, for example, is that the plan doesn't call for a hundred and fifty street trees but calls for seventy-five street trees, then, you know, there'd be an adjustment to that, to that bid.
And I, yeah.
But I'd say that for us, you know, we're typically going to lean on Beta's estimate because, again, our cost is not necessarily your cost. But I think the onus is kind of on you to detail out, you know, even line by line as to, you know, where this could potentially be brought down.
Yeah, the units in the takeoff, it matches. It's just the unit cost. That's the only difference. And if there's really not much we can do about it, I mean, then we're fine with the amount. We've passed this buyer bond company already, and they're fine with it. They're ready to issue. So.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? None, okay.
Through the chair, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, just, this is to the applicant. And in your estimate, how long will this work take so that way you can get your bond back as quickly as possible? Because I want to make sure that things can proceed as quickly for you as possible.
So as we sell the houses and generate revenue, we'll use that fund, those funds to complete the work. So it's going to run parallel into, you know, the development of the houses, which we're looking at, you know, no more than eighteen months to, from start to finish, at eight homes. So it wouldn't exceed eighteen months.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. And John, just to confirm, so the motion here will be to establish a bond amount?
Correct. And through the chair, just one point, and this is for Shane. Shane, I don't have the Form K. Did you send that over?
I don't think I did send that over.
So if you have it and you can send it, I can put it up on the screen. It's a relatively simple form, but unless we have something, I don't know if the planning board can vote on a Form K without seeing what the Form K says. Do you have one drafted that you can send over?
No, I don't. I just had the Form G for the proposed bond.
Okay.
All right. Well, you know, what we can do, Shane, is we can go ahead and vote on the bond total. We can move on and again, I recognize that, you know, we're going a little bit outside of our normal process here, but if you can get that Form K over to John before we wrap up at the end of the meeting, then to John's point, it's reasonably straightforward, and maybe we can fit it in.
Yep, I can do that.
Sound okay?
Sounds good.
All right. I'm getting a signal that says my internet connection is unstable. Can you guys still hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I can hear you.
All right, so on that, I will entertain a motion to establish a bond for Turkey Ridge for the total of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
So move.
Second. Matthew Rocker.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, Rob, how do you vote?
Rob Benson, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Ron?
Ron Preefer, yes.
Elise?
Elise Mihailowski, yes.
Matthew?
Matthew Rocker, yes.
Vika said?
Vika Sathrani, yes.
And Nadi?
Nadi, yes.
And Gary is a yes as well. So so Shane, like I said, just go ahead and if you can get that Form K done, shoot that over to John, and we'll continue. And if we can get to it at the end of the meeting, we will.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and finish up these bond releases, and then we'll reorganize if that's okay with everyone. Maspa Knoc Woods, John, you want to summarize this one for us?
Yeah, I don't know if we need to talk about this one too much. Maspa Knoc Woods is looking for the same bond release. I don't know why all of these came in all at once. It was like a period of a week where everyone wanted their bond money back. They still have some work before Concom, so Concom is asking that we hold the bond until they finish that work. But they would be looking for a release of the tripartite bond of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, two hundred.
All right, is there anyone on from the applicant from Maspa Knoc Woods on the call? And I guess the reason I'm asking, John, is, you know, we could either, I mean, given the Conservation Commission's note that the work hasn't been completed, my preference would be to not take a vote on this and wait until that's done, but I guess we can go ahead and take a vote. And if that's, if that ends up being a no, then they can come back and request that again when they're done. Correct?
I would say don't even vote if you are just looking for a no. I would say just hold off. No one's here.
Okay.
It's not a rush. There's no deadline that they're trying to meet.
Okay. Well, I'm going to recommend we don't take a vote on this, but I will open up to the planning board to see if people feel otherwise.
Through the chair, I'm just curious for, you know, like legality, is it best just to vote to hold until the next meeting instead of voting on the actual potential motion? And so it's just like a vote to postpone. Is that allowed? Like points of order?
I think, Ron, what John's recommending is we just don't vote on it. And there's not a, there's not a requirement. This isn't a public hearing. There's no town meeting coming up that they're trying to get this done so they can get the street accepted. So I think this is one we just push to the next, the next meeting agenda.
Kick the can. I like it.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and hold on this one. All right, back to the board reorganization. And so just to give everybody a little background here, after each election, we take the opportunity to reorganize as a board, and that's generally recognizing that with new members and the board itself should be electing its leadership. And even if there aren't new members, we still do this on an annual basis, just to make sure that the leadership on the board is representative and what the board wants to align with. So from a process perspective, what we'll do is we'll start with the chair, and we'll go ahead and take nominations for the chair. We'll, depending on the number of people, this gets a little trickier when we're all remote, but depending on the number of people that are nominated. There's a couple of different ways we can manage the voting here. But we do need a majority affirmative number of votes for one candidate. So did I explain that all right, John?
I'm sorry, one more time. I was looking through my files.
Oh, sorry. I was just explaining the process that will, that will need a nomination. We'll start with the chair. We need a nomination. And then depending on the number of nominations, that will dictate how we move forward with the actual voting sequence.
That's correct.
If it was just one, then we could take a vote on that. If it was two, then we could vote for one or the other. If it was three, we can still vote, but we need a majority of the board, which in this case would be five people to vote for the same person.
Correct.
Through the chair, if I may, I'd like to kick this start, get this started by nominating Gary Trendle as the Chair of the Planning Board.
Second.
It's also customary that if someone's nominated, they will accept or decline that. So I will accept that, but I appreciate your vote of confidence. Or your motion of confidence, I guess, just because we haven't voted yet. Are there any other nominations for Chair?
I would love to vote for Gary.
No, we're not voting yet. We're just taking nominations.
Your nomination, sorry.
It's okay. Okay. With only one nomination, then that makes this voting reasonably straightforward. Gosh, John, I feel like it's, well, it's been a year since I've done this. What's the language for the actual vote?
I don't think there's any real set thing. You can say, you know, everyone in favor of Gary, or you can do the, you can have somebody move that Gary has elected Chair. I don't think it really needs to take any kind of form.
Okay. Well, then let's let's just go around the table here and you can cast your vote in the affirmative. If you vote yes, or you can vote nay if you want to vote against it. So, Rob?
Yes.
Jane?
Jane is a yes, and thank you, Gary.
Ron?
Yes.
Elise?
Yeah.
Matthew?
Yes.
Vika said?
Yes, thank you, Gary.
And Nadi?
Yes, thank you, Gary.
And Gary is a yes as well. So thank you. I appreciate the vote of confidence this time around. So, yeah, thanks. Appreciate it. Moving on to our Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Bob Robert Benson.
Thanks, Jane.
You're welcome.
I'll second that. Rob, are you open to that position?
Yes, I'd be happy to be considered for that.
Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Ronnie.
I will second that.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other nominations?
I will nominate Robert.
All right, so Nadi, Robert's already nominated, so we don't need more nominations. We're just seeing if there's anyone else that people would like to nominate, any other people. Okay, so what I'm hearing is we've got two candidates for Vice Chair. We have Ron Preefer and Rob Benson. Do you guys want to make any comments before we take a vote? It's up to you.
Sure. So as I look around, I realize I'm the second most tenured on the board after Gary. I've been the Vice Chair before. I've lived in Hopkinton almost forty years now, so I've seen a lot of change. Probably have more constituents in Hopkinton than anyone else on the board, I would say, just by being here for so long. Obviously, my kids are third generation living in town still. So I just think I have a lot of people that I can talk to and a lot of people that talk to me about Planning Board Matters, and just think I'll do do the right thing representing the board. So that's all.
All right, thanks, Rob. Ryan?
So whatever the Planning Board Committee decides, I fully support. Rob has been a fantastic colleague this last years on the planning board. I feel that, you know, I've been able to contribute to the planning board, and regardless of this outcome, I will continue to do so. And it would be an honor to be considered, and if not, I will equally be a colleague to both Gary, Rob, and all the rest of you. So regardless, I thank you for the nomination vote of confidence.
Okay. So this is always a little bit trickier because, number one, people have to, everyone has to vote, including those that were nominated. And then secondly, again, with eight of us, we still need five to have a confirmed choice. So what I'm going to do is I'm actually going to start the voting with the two people that were nominated, just because my past experience is a little awkward when it comes down to the end. And yes, sorry, John, did you have?
Yeah, sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt, and I don't want to get too far in, but I just want to point out that, and you can tell me I'm wrong or stop, but you waited for Jane for a full board, but Michael hasn't been sworn in.
Could we wait till, are you recommending through the chair?
I'm not recommending anything. I just want to point out that you did wait for one member when you thought Michael was sworn in. So I just, I don't know if you really want a full board or if you want to vote with eight.
I'll just say this. I don't have an issue with anybody that we've picked so far, so.
All right. Um. That's a, that's a little bit of a dilemma here. You know, I think in the spirit of my original comments of wanting the full board to vote, I'm inclined to hold off until the next meeting. And I Um, and I, you know, I'm curious to hear if people, other people have thoughts on that, um, you know, I think with a, uh, with a recognized chair to move forward, and that enables us to continue to, to participate, or to continue to, to have meetings, um, but I'm, I'm open to suggestions, I don't, I don't have strong feelings the other way, Matthew?
Yes, uh, through the chair, um, while, um, I have no problem with either, uh, colleague being Vice Chair, um, I will be uh, in the air without internet access during the next meeting, so I'll be missing that one.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes, Jane.
I would suggest that we just go around the table and vote and see what happens. And, but then the next meeting, it, it may come up again if it's a tie.
Yeah.
But you may, you may get a candidate tonight.
You know, knowing that we're not gonna have Matthew here next time, um, I, I think to your point, Jane, let's, let's go ahead and, and go through the voting and, and see where things land. Sound good? You can nod your heads, yes?
Yes.
Alright, uh, so, Rob, how do you vote?
I.
A name?
Uh, Rob.
Uh, Ron?
Ron.
Uh, Elise?
I vote for Rob.
Jane?
Uh, Jane is for Rob.
Matthew?
I vote for Ron.
Um. Vicissi?
Oh boy, a tough one, okay. I'll go for Rob.
Naveed?
I'll also vote for Rob.
And that leaves me, but we've already got five for Rob, um, I will vote for Rob as well.
Congratulations.
Through to the chair, thanks, everybody.
Alright.
Oh.
And, uh, appreciate the discussion and the openness there, um, but, uh, I think, given the most just Matthew's comments and Jane's, I, I think that made sense, so appreciate that, everyone. Um, okay, let's go ahead and turn to our hearing this evening for twenty-eight Lumber Street. And I see Mr. Connors. Hi, George.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good noon.
Good, um. So I thought what we do tonight, it's, it's, uh, nice to see you on this, uh, topic. Um, I know that, uh, it's been a little while since, um, you've been in front of the board, um, but I, just for people's background, we did do the initial introduction of the project, we did do a sidewalk, which is, I think, incredibly helpful. Um, Beta has reviewed their, uh, their proposal, and, uh, Beta and the applicant are working through the, um, their remaining, uh, uh, issues in terms of review. Um, my thought, George, tonight is, first, if you can give us a, a, a quick update on where you stand in the process, uh, what, if anything, has, has changed since you've been before us. Um. And then I, I think it's worth, uh, at the least, that we go through and identify the remaining i- items to be resolved, um, from, uh, from Beta's review. And I, I say that, I, I don't wanna go through all of them tonight, we really, as a board, encourage applicants to work through the details with Beta, um, so that, um, and if there are things that are outstanding that you can't come to alignment on, then that's where the board will get into more details there, but we do rely very heavily on, on Beta, and we'd like to continue to do so, so I, I think, you know, I, I, given just timing and when things have been coming through, I, I think that's about as far as we're gonna get tonight, but, um, does that seem reasonable to you?
Perfectly.
Okay. So why don't you go ahead and, and, um, give us a, let's start with the update, where, where do things stand on the project?
Um, may I share a screen while we do that?
Yes, sir.
We'll be all set now, George.
Okay, coming up.
We don't see it yet.
We don't see.
Alright, George, we can see your screen.
Hey.
And we can see your drawing.
Alright, so this starts it, we have, um, this particular piece of land on Lumber Street, it's about three and a half acres. It is, um, best seen from the little locust map up here in the corner. It's down a little bit on Lumber Street from West Main to the north of it is the, um, Harper's, um, repair shop for cars. Just a little bit north of that is a contractor's yard for the McIntyre loan. And on the other side of it in here is the, uh, little landscaper, Scott's Landscaping. Doug DeWolf, the owner of this property, owns this parcel and this parcel as well as the nursery, and a particular aspect of this particular site is that we have a front area that's upland, a middle area that has some wetlands, has an old, uh, dugout pond mined gravel for four ninety-five, and then in the back of it Doug has some plant material back in this location here. So that's basically the site. The, uh, plan that you seen was this one here, it has been changed a little bit to move the replication area in the back in response to a couple of issues that Beta identified. In the interim, I spoke with Mr. Harper of the, on the property next door, and we are now working with him and Joe Market on to coordinate some of this work on the two sites. They will be coming in with a plan for some renovations and parking in the lot, if you recall, we actually parked here, um, back in the sidewalk. I'd like to try and find another drawing here to show you.
So, so George, just so what were the specific changes from what we saw previously?
The specific changes are to change this replication area and this replication area, and put them back here, and reduce the amount of distance out onto abutting properties as, uh, something that influenced them later on in their development. The other issues where we had, uh, dealt with the lighting, and we reduced that down considerably, I've had problems with lighting consultants asking for fourteen foot poles, there's still twenty, um, very minimally over on lighting over the lot line by point one and point two lumens. Um, I'm certain that when we get these down to fourteen feet, that that will be taken care of. Uh, we added site distance for the, uh, exiting, um, location here as requested. It's, um, four hundred and fifty feet in this direction, three hundred and sixty-five in this direction, as you know, we're coming in and looping and going out, this is a, uh, a better location for the exit, you and, uh, the rest of the board were out there when we did the sidewalk and actually evaluate that quite, um, clearly. Um. There were some issues with the slope along here and here for, um, plantings, we did check Wolf was a landscaper and Ian assisted that we couldn't indeed plant those the way we supposed. Uh, we have the, um, butts people working on a very comprehensive uh, permitting process going before conservation, should be filed in the next few days. Um, and as you know, that's gonna be fairly problematic because we are filling in a little bit of wetlands down in here for this parking lot, we don't have a lot of room and the setbacks and things of that nature. Was a question as to whether or not this constituted a, uh, open uh, landscape area as septic system, and it's, um, minimally, um, landscaped trees, it's a lawn area. Excuse me, the pollen's awful, isn't it? Um, so, uh, there was a question on that, that's for, I think, the board to decide. There was a question on whether or not there should be a sidewalk along this. We are, um, willing to put a sidewalk in, indeed, if it's required, as you know, um, we talked about a sidewalk coming down Lumber Street, and you weren't certain whether or not that was gonna be a, uh, part of the tennis club or whatever it's going on across the street, but we are amenable to that. It is a, um, plan for the medical building, and it's more of a speculative plan at this particular stage, we don't have an actual tenant, we tried to sell, Mr. Wolf tried to sell. And, uh, the permitting process is something that, uh, held up any real, um, uh, interest in, um, marketing the property. So this is, um, subject to a little bit of, uh, architectural things, at some point, we did submit a plan that showed the building and the facade that would match something down on Lumber Street, we went before design review, and they were quite happy with that, uh, sort of a, uh, layout and building. Two floors, five thousand square foot each. Um, the parking is in the back and along the sides, there's a lane to come around here, and the fire truck can make all those turns. Um. With the fire and police did note at the, uh, hearing the first time, there was issues with, um, a lot of calls from medical facilities. I'm not sure that's an issue with this, but indeed, we do have, um, adequate access to it, the ability to get the machines, uh, the fire machines in and out. In terms of some of the, um, stormwater and land issues, I think that, uh, we really do have to go before conservation, I think that will take a little while. Um, but a plan like this really needs some, um, direction before we can really discuss in detail with Conservation Commission, and I think this is really in, uh, pretty good shape for that. So I'll respond to questions, comments, and suggestions at this stage, and, um, see what I can do to help along.
Alright, so, um, let's go over to Phil. Phil knew that was coming because he just, uh, turned his camera on, thank you, Phil. Um, and, and Phil, what I, what I'd love to do is go through your letter, and specifically the, I just wanna make sure that we're all clear on where George and the applicant need to continue to work, uh, to align with, um, with, with, with Beta on this.
Okay, yeah, um, so the, you know, the, uh, response to comments and, and revisions, uh, addressed many of the comments. Um, we are, as, as was, uh, stated by the applicant here, uh, concerned that we need input from Conservation for, uh, a number of the issues, it is it is kind of a kind of pushing the envelope, um, for them on this, so we would expect some back and forth. Uh, and that may change the plans. Um, however, I, I would like to go through the, uh, the issues that we were.
Hey, hey, Phil, you know, let, let's hang on one second there, because I, that's kinda what I was thinking here is uh, you know, just, just knowing how Concom has been reviewing these, I, I mean, uh, to your point, there is a a likelihood of requested modifications to this, and I, I guess my question for George, you know, before we get too far into the weeds tonight, uh, it, it feels like it would be helpful to, uh, get this in front of Concom and at least get that initial review done with them first, just to avoid, uh, having to review this in its current form, and then going to have and, and review it again, uh, if there are changes of any type based on the, the Concom review. And if, you know, I, I mean, I, I'm looking at you, if, if, if you wanna continue, we, we can, but I, just in the interest of efficiency, I, it, it feels like we should at least, you should get that preliminary Concom input before we spend a lot more time on this.
I, I would agree with that, I, I would just like to note that I think that other than conservation and storm water actions that, um, we're fairly, um, in, um, sponsor with Beta's re- review and comments. Um, a couple of minor things, the lighting one. And, um.
Okay, alright.
Or issues.
So, so let's, let's go back to, uh, before I interrupted Phil, let's go back to it, and, uh, Phil duly noted on the Concom piece. But let's, um, let's go ahead and, and, and go through the, uh, the other components of the review, and, 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 um, we'll just see if we can align on, on those.
Yeah, so the, 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 um, L, LA two, I don't know if you have my letter, uh, LA two on page three.
Yep.
Um, there's a requirement for, uh, ten percent of the parking lot area to be landscape area interior.
Um. George, George, can you, or actually, maybe, um, at this point, it makes sense for, for John, um, John, can you pull up the Beta letter? We can follow along with Phil's comments.
I'm gonna start sharing.
Yes, thank you, George. Alright, thanks, John.
So, yeah, so this, the regulation requires ten percent of the parking lot area interior to be landscaped, so we did not see that, and, uh, the applicant indicated that there would be a discussion with the board. Um, and, and such, so maybe we should do that?
Sure. Yeah, I respond. Yeah, that, that front area that I had on the map, between the building and the, uh, road was a landscaped area, didn't have a lot of trees, it was basically the septic system in that location. Um, but we believe that that could suffice for, um, that area of landscaping because the site is, um, fairly constrained by the, uh, wetlands.
Alright, so what you're, what you're proposing, George, is that the the septic area be considered as part of the landscape percentage, at which point it would conform to that ten percent requirement?
Yes.
Which, uh, seems reasonable to me, given that it's gonna be grass, I'm assuming?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Phil, is that, I mean, just given that consideration, I mean, do you see any, any red flags or concerns with that?
Um, I, I do not, it's not a, it's not a huge parking lot, um, I, you know, obviously, there, there needs to be planting, surrounding it, and screening it from the butters, et cetera. Um, and, you know, obviously, it would be better to have trees interior for the He- Heat Island effect, um, and such, but it, it's not a, it's not a a, a huge parking lot, so.
Yeah, and I guess, George, that's, uh, I think, to Phil's point, you know, having, having some trees back by the parking lot. Um, I, I, I appreciate the, the the consideration of the septic field being, being grass and being part of that, but I, I guess I'm just wondering if, if, uh, you know, I tend to, I think Phil makes a good point, and, um, you know, we, we know that parking lots generally are more aesthetically pleasing, you know, heat-related issues and whatnot, it's nice to have some additional shade back there.
Okay, let me look at that with the.
That's, that's my opinion, I don't know if other folks on the board have, have thoughts on that, but I the reason we've got the interior space of parking lots landscaped is specifically for those reasons that, that Phil outlined. Alright, Phil, you wanna move on to the next one?
So, uh, the, um, lighting issues were mentioned, I think that's gonna provide some refinement. Um, I did see some documents come in today, so I don't I did see some documents come in today, so I don't know if that addresses the the missing documents. Yeah. I think otherwise. Some standard conditions that we always apply, recommend including. Yeah, so other than the the missing documents, that was the only issue, I think, and and obviously wetland issues. I think, you know, that should be addressed first and then. If if there were changes, then we can sum all the up, all the remaining issues in the next review, so.
All right, so what I'm hearing is a couple of things. One, we'd like to. Get at least a preliminary view from Concom on this before we progress it. Two would be a bit more landscaping in the parking lot area. Three, it would be providing the additional drawings that are required. Four is the.
Documents.
Documents, sorry, thank you. Additional documents. Four would be the the lighting analysis with the lower lower poles. And then the last one, which I I think is is really up to us as a board. Is the sidewalk. And to George's point, they're willing to put a sidewalk in there. Sidewalks are always a little tricky in these situations because the only way sidewalks get built generally is is. When properties like this are built, but at the same point, there's not a sidewalk on either a budding property, so it can kind of feel like. Not a really useful sidewalk when it doesn't connect to anything. So what we had talked about originally is, you know, with the tennis and swim club across the street, is that there would be some type of pedestrian access. Likely, but I, you know, we never fully. I'm trying to remember where we landed with the the tennis club, because there's some wetlands to deal with as well. I do think it's important to have a sidewalk that continues down Lumber Street. It's just a function of figuring out. Where exactly to to put that and then, secondly, who's going to pay for it? So those are kind of the five, the five things that I that I see here and appreciate. George and Phil's comments. Comments or questions for the planning board?
Yeah, through the chair. If I recall, on the side where the tennis club is approved to go. Going all the way down to the Plaza and the one ten grill in that area down there, there is a sidewalk already, so it would make logical sense. If a sidewalk was to be maintained on that one side. So having a disjointed sidewalk where some some is on one side and the other, then would require crosswalks. And then I don't necessarily have in favor of having crosswalk on Lumber Street as well, so. I would think that it should be maintained on the other side, if at all, we mean to have a continuation of sidewalks. Just my thoughts.
Well said, Ronnie. I think that makes logical sense. Yes, Jane.
Do we know if there are wetland issues on the tennis, proposed tennis site on the opposite side of where this is going to be? Built. And secondly, I know that when we were there, we did see pedestrians. Up and down Lumber Street, and that's a very dangerous road. And even if there was a small segment. Of a sidewalk, it would help a little bit to help people stay off the road. And then my third point might be that we don't even know if this tennis court club is going to be built or when. So I appreciate George's offer to put a sidewalk in, and I think that if he's offering it. It would be a big safety plus for the road.
Good points, Jane.
Through, through, through the chair, could I just add what I can remember about the tennis club discussion? So at the time, the, there was issues with potential wetlands on the tennis club side of the road. To go from one ten grill plaza to directly to the tennis club. But we never got conservation commissions like final stance. On whether they would allow a sidewalk on that side of the road because we had to vote on like our planning board matters first, so we never. I think. We never got any input of what the conservation commission would say about a sidewalk. From kind of the one ten grill Starbucks area to the tennis club. But that was the, that was our opinion. We wanted it on that side of the road, but. We didn't know what the conservation commission would say, and I don't think any of us know where it stands today.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. I mean, here's what I'm thinking. And John, I'm wondering if maybe if it's possible to go back and look in the files for the tennis and swim club. And I I think Jane makes a good point. We don't know that that's going to be built. We have sidewalks as a requirement for a reason, but I I think it would be helpful just to see. Where we landed on that topic with Tennessee Swim Club and then. You know, I think we can certainly, with that information, then I think that just enables us to have a more intelligent conversation. With whether or not we would want this applicant to put a sidewalk on their side of the street.
Okay, was it, was there a question in there?
Uh, yeah, I guess I just am requesting that that if you can go look, look up in the from some tennis club files and see. What we did include in that for a sidewalk.
Do you want me to try and do that now or for next meeting?
I think realistically for next meeting. Any other questions or comments from the board?
To the chat, just a quick, let's say that if the tennis court was approved for the sidewalk, the board comes back and says no. Does that mean that the opposite road should require a sidewalk for? Or can the tennis club can make sure that they can take the Kentucky Ridge sidewalk and extend it to the one ten grill? I'm just trying to understand.
So. Make sure I understand your question. You know, so so we can't require someone. Well, we generally don't require someone to put a sidewalk in on land that's not theirs. Okay. And there are situations where we will waive requirements for sidewalks. And without, without having a map in front of me, I I'm trying to remember if. Excuse me, sorry, just had a leg cramp. I'm trying to remember if the, and I, you know, and again, the the challenge is that just because we included the sidewalk in the swim, 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 the tennis club. That may not ever be be built. So to me, I, while I think it's useful information for us, I don't think we want to put too much. Weight on that with regards to this application. Because, you know, this is, this is our, really our best opportunity to to start building a sidewalk on Lumber Street at all. And, you know, simple fact of the matter that that, based on George's comments, that at least one of the butters is going to be, might be before us as well. Then there's a second opportunity to to lengthen the sidewalk. So I I don't think. You know, I don't, I don't have a simple answer for it. I think it's helpful for us all to be aware of the the history and what we've decided previously. But. You know, I I think we'll want to give this some some good thought either way as to whether we want a sidewalk on on this property. I'm not sure if I answered your question or not, but.
Thanks, Gary.
It's a little tricky.
I'm good.
All right, any other questions or comments or from the public for that matter? Okay. So George, I think you're you're clear on those those five, really four things for you. The the fifth one on the sidewalks is on us. So on that note, then we should vote to continue this and. John or Stephanie, do we need to continue the decision as well?
No, so since this is a site plan, the decision is due, just confirming with my notes. Decision is due. Ninety days after the close of the public hearing.
Okay, and George, are you scheduled with Concom yet?
No, we are not. We are ready to file this with the wetlands people this week. I am gold. I would expect that that's probably true. I think that. June sixth is the deadline for the June twenty seventh meeting. If memory serves, I looked at that earlier today. And then the hearing on the twenty seventh, I would say we push so to the last meeting in July.
July twenty fourth.
How's that?
Okay, I think that makes sense. So I will entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to July twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty three.
Don't move.
Don't move. Second.
All right, assuming no further discussion. Rob, how do you vote?
Rob Benson, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Ron?
Ron, pre for yes.
Elise?
Elise, yes.
Matthew?
Uh, yes.
Vicissi?
Yes.
Nupdi?
Yes.
And Gary is a yes as well, so. Appreciate the update, George, and I'm glad to see that that list with beta is relatively short, but we will see you on July twenty fourth.
Thank you. Good night.
All right. Last item on our agenda this evening is meeting minutes and Stephanie, can you just confirm which? Yes, John.
We received the Form K from Shane and I believe he is on the call if you want to take that too.
All right. Hey Shane.
How we doing?
Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, the undersigned members of the planning board of the town of Hoppiington hereby certify that the conditions imposed at the time of its approval of subdivision plan at Town Turkey Registates. Drawn by J D Market Associates. Excuse me. All right, so you're requesting all the lots be released.
Yep.
Mr. Gelsich. Any. Town Hall perspective on this?
So, you know, ha- having just received this, I haven't really had a chance to look at it. It seems like it's. Straightforward and correct. My one comment to the board would be, you can vote to endorse this, but I would recommend. In your motion to endorse that you. Direct us to hold the release of the actual document until evidence of the bond has been provided.
Yes, I was just thinking the same thing. Through the chair, can you, John, could you confirm the numbers, three oh three of twenty twenty two and all those numbers are accurate or do we have that anywhere?
No, I mean, I'd have to look at the plans and the recording. I don't have that in front of me right now and it might take me a little bit of time. I mean, if it's not accurate, then the form doesn't matter. It's really the applicant's. Motive to get this right, so if they think it's right, it is. Yeah, it's essentially just a legal document referencing the plans that were recorded. It doesn't really change the approval of the planning board. It's just. Referencing the plans that were approved, recorded and all that stuff. The main point is that it says lots one through eight, so they're looking for all the lots to be released. That's kind of the the main thing. So if the board doesn't want all lots released at this time, that's up to them. Otherwise, the other stuff is really just kind of technical information.
Yeah, John, I pulled those right off of the Middlesex Registry website, so it should be accurate. All right. Just kind of conversationally, how how do board members? Feel about this? I I I'm personally comfortable with it as long as we continue to. Hold the lot release until the the bond is funded. But I, you know, we can go and take a vote, but anybody have any comments, questions about that before we? Formalize that with a motion and a vote? Okay, let me see if I can get the language right on this, then I will entertain a motion. To release. Lots one through eight of Turkey Ridge Estates with. Full funding of the bond of five hundred thirty nine thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. And that those lots will not be released until. Until that that bond is funded. I said the same thing twice there, but.
Let me.
Don't move.
Uh, hang on, hang on, John's got a friendly amendment here.
I would just, I would just say the motion would be to, you move to endorse the Form K, but direct staff to. Hold the form, the release of the form until evidence of the bond has been provided.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to endorse Form K for Turkey Ridge Estates, lot one through eight. But that the. Town hold Form K until. Until the bond is.
Evidence of the bond has been provided.
Till evidence of the bond being provided is is shown.
Poor grammar, but I move the motion.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? See none. Rob, how do you vote?
Rob Benson, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran is a yes.
Ron?
Ron, pre for yes.
Elise?
Elise is a yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Vicis.
Yes.
Nupdi?
Yes.
And Gary is a yes as well. All right, yes, John. No, I know what John's gonna say, but John, you're muted.
We haven't done this in a while. I need all of you guys to come in and sign this form. I will be in tomorrow. I will be in the rest of the week except for Friday, so please come in. I need, I'm going to be the notary, so I need to see you guys all sign it.
But Michael does not, since he was not voting.
Michael cannot sign it. Yeah, so Michael escapes this one.
So all of you.
What are your hours again, John?
Tomorrow, I am probably going to be in until around five thirty ish. I have a design review board meeting tomorrow night, so I. Probably not going to stay the entire night for that one. And then I will be in from nine until. Four thirty, four forty five, Wednesday and Thursday.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
And then Shane's still on?
Yeah.
I'll let you know when it's fully endorsed and you can come pick it up.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Back to our last agenda item tonight, meeting minutes and. Stephanie, can you just confirm which ones we have?
So April twenty fourth and May eighth.
Okay, thank you. I was scrolling here quickly.
And through the chair, I did notice on May eighth, I got a little excited because it was a quick meeting. Did them right away. I forgot to add the page numbers on, so I do just have to add the page numbers.
Okay, so I think. We can take that into consideration when we accept them. Any questions or comments from folks on the meeting minutes? All right, and then on that note, I will entertain a motion. To accept the meeting minutes from April twenty fourth and May eighth, two thousand and. To accept the meeting minutes from April twenty fourth and May eighth, two thousand and twenty three.
So moved.
Second.
Um and John, one process question for you here. Um should the new members. Not vote on these?
No, so they should, um or they can if they want to. Uh so basically, the the thing that I tell everybody with new boards or when there's minutes uh with new members is if the entire board were to resign. And new members would be on, they would never be able to approve minutes that were currently before the board. So it's okay for members who have just signed on to vote on them, because all they're doing is confirming that those were the minutes of the meeting.
Okay, thanks, John. Any other questions or discussion? See none. Rob, how do you vote?
Rob Benson, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Ron?
Ron, prefer, yes.
Elise?
Elise, may I love the yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Vicissi? Yes. Navee?
Yes.
And Gary is a yes as well. Um all right. Well, uh on that note, uh I will entertain a motion. Oh, John's got one more thing.
Sorry, I'm being very annoying tonight. Um I just want to point out, I'm not gonna be here July tenth. For the meeting. I don't know if we have anything on the agenda, but I just want to call that out now, so uh we're not surprised when I'm not here. Um so I can talk to you, Gary, offline about that, about what you want to do. We don't have anything yet on the agenda for that meeting, but um want to call that out.
Yeah, I mean, I, my recommendation is if we can avoid putting things on the agenda for July tenth. Then that's preferred. Um but that being said, if if there are things that we are are required to. For timing considerations that were required to to discuss them, then we can.
I'll make a note.
So uh our next meeting is June fifth. Uh just so folks know, we've got June fifth, June twenty sixth, potentially July tenth, and then July twenty fourth. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Assuming no further discussion, Rob, how do you vote?
Rob Benson, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Ron?
Ron, prefer, yes.
Elise?
Elise, yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Michael? Nope, sorry, not Michael. Uh Vicissi?
Yes.
And Navee?
Yes.
And Gary is a yes as well, so. Thank you all. Have a great night. Enjoy uh what's hopefully a uh long weekend for most of you, and uh we'll see you in two weeks.